Go.
Okay, Mayor, I think we are on Facebook Live and ready to go for today's meeting.
Excellent. Good evening, everybody. Adequate notice of this meeting, as required by the Open Public Meetings Act, was provided through the posting, mailing, and filing of the annual notice of regularly scheduled meetings of the Town Council on December 11, 2019. The notice was on that date, posted on the bulletin board in the municipal building, provided to the Westfield leader and the Star Ledger, and filed with the clerk of the town of Westfield. Mrs. Rowley, may I have a roll call?
Mayor Brindle?
Here.
Council members Habgood?
Here.
Parmally?
Here.
LaGrippo?
Here.
Katz?
Here.
Mackey?
Here.
Contract?
Here.
Dardia?
Here.
Boys?
Here.
And so now ask everybody to stand for a salute to the flag. My pledge of allegiance
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one under God, visible, liberty.
Wait, just realized I'm in my wrong location. I'll have to fix that. So Jim, do you
Thank you, Mayor. A few things to update everybody on. Reminder that this Saturday is the Green Team Free Market event at the South Side Train Station lot. So that's, you know, something that was originally planned in April, rescheduled for September. And you can find more information on the website about it and signing up for various times of your drop off or pickup. But that's the Saturday, 8:00 AM to 3:00 PM at the South Side Train Station lot. Also, just want to give a shout out to the Recreation Department Memorial Pool. The season ended on Sunday. And frankly, I don't know that we all thought a few months ago that we'd make it through the season. But thanks to our work of the staff, Heather Ray particularly, her staff, the pool staff, the managers, and the members. It was really a nice bright spot, actually, in the course of the summer for those that were members. I remember myself, and I was able to get there even on the last day. Swimming laps, even though the water was very cold, but really a nice opportunity and the pool staff, everyone, you know, there really was safe environment, clean environment, and the members really just want to thank the members for joining, number one, and attending the complex and really, you know, being responsible. So it's just another, you know, under the circumstances, a great season at Memorial Pool and hopefully be back even next year. So, but the staff, the Recreation Office, and the pool staff just did a phenomenal job. Couple of quick things. You might see some new beautiful benches going in at Mendawaskin Park. The Friends of Mendawaskin, again, as once we finished our work with the pathways and all different work, they continue to do fundraising, of course, for benches, and they were just out there today and yesterday, and will continue to install the benches at their expense. It's a great volunteer group that continues to fundraise for the park and put in from Mendawaskin Park to continue to enhance the park. So we got a few questions about that in the office. They saw people out there. So they've hired some people to install the benches that Public Works has been holding for them for the past few months. So really nice installations going on. And lastly, just a reminder, the, in the next couple of days before next, before next Wednesday, or at least by next Wednesday, the fourth quarter reconciled tax bills will be sent out. And basically, that's the final tax bill. If you remember, we do the estimated tax bills in July before the August payment, because we don't have the certified tax rate from the county at that point. This year particularly was pushed back even further. So the new fourth quarter reconcile will go out by next Tuesday or Wednesday. And of course, they will include the third quarter payment, which everyone's already made, and then the fourth quarter payment in November 1st, and the first two quarters of next year, which is then the full tax cycle, August 1st through May 1st of next year. So that'll be seen in the mail, and you'll have an explanation of each quarter, what you're paying. And that's, you know, an annual thing that gets asked. So Henry Wang, our tax collector, is repairing the bills with our company, and that'll be going out soon. So a lot of information coming your way, but all good news, and that's all I have, Mayor, so I'll pass it to you.
Jim, real quick, could you give an update on the crossing guards? I'm starting to receive concerns regarding no crossing guards along Central Avenue and Washington and Westfield Avenue. One of the crossing guards advised me that 16 posts were reduced. So just try to get a handle on how many have been reduced, and I know it's on the town website as far as the locations, but the concern is the reduction in crossing guards.
As we said at the last meeting, the whole program is restructured and reallocated due to people not returning, people retiring, the COVID situation, and schedule for the schools, which we already have seen has changed for the high school the first week of school. So yes, posts were moved, reallocated, and reduced. I don't have these posts off the top of my head, but we've had a few questions come up, and Chief Bataloro, Sergeant of the Traffic Bureau, has been calling people back to allow, to advise them of what the new walking route should be. And everyone seems to be pretty satisfied so far. One example, for example, Mountain Avenue. We used to have two posts on Mountain Avenue, one at Park and Lawrence and Mountain, and one at East Dudley and Mountain. And they're very, you know, long crossings. And so we did there, we consolidated those two posts into one new post on the Mountain and Kimball. That was a reduction of one post in place of two, and it's actually a safer, shorter distance to cross Mountain Avenue, and that seems to have worked pretty well. As I said last time, too, there's, you know, there's, we had to restructure the program for lots of reasons, but so far it seems to be working pretty well.
Yeah, then just keep an eye on, because there's no crossing guards here in the third ward for the residents on the other side of Central Avenue to get to Jefferson, Tamaki, Edison. So I think it's something that we really do have to look at, because I have heard from several residents that there's no crossing guards along Central Avenue. Thank you.
Sure.
So thank you. So just a few comments from me. I just want to remind everybody only comments are accepted via Zoom, so although we're live streaming it on Facebook, the only, if you want any comments, you have to log into Zoom to, to ask them. And I do want to reiterate, and thanks to the pool, I have to say Memorial Pool, light of the touch and go aspect of being able to open, I think they did a phenomenal job, and I personally have received several compliments from residents who have said how incredible the staff was. So thanks to Jim and to Heather and to Don and the whole staff for a great summer at Memorial. An update on COVID, you probably heard that New Jersey hit a grim milestone last, not too far along ago. 200,580 confirmed cases of COVID in New Jersey. 326 still under investigation. Union County has 17,505. Since my last update on Friday, Westfield has four new cases. One on Sunday, one on Monday, and two today, bringing our total of 389 since our first reported case in March. And where I'm trying to get more updated information on a regular basis regarding ages and so forth, and but everybody should know that the data I get comes from the police chief that comes up through the state. The details on age and that kind of thing come from the Health Department, and oftentimes those reports aren't aligned. So it requires some reconciliation between the chief and Megan Adalone for us to actually provide you an accurate accounting. But we're doing the best what we can in light of some, you know, crazy reporting scenarios that exist. Just on the state, you probably heard from the governor today that he added five states to the list that are on our travel advisory, Arizona, Minnesota, Nevada, Rhode Island, and Wyoming. And there is a childcare tuition program, hopefully, that people may have heard about for families aged five to 13. So childcareNJ.gov is a place where residents can go to look that up. Today was a very, is a very important today. It dates National Voter Registration Day. The deadline to register to vote in New Jersey for the upcoming general election is October 13. You can, you can go on to the state election site to register or to confirm your registration. And I do want to remind everybody, if it's, haven't heard, because I got some questions about it today, and we think everybody knows, but not necessarily. This is primarily a vote by mail election in our state. And it's important for everybody to have complete information about this process. You, everybody will be getting a vote by mail ballot in their mailbox. And I encourage, if you want details, to everybody should go to the Union County Board of Elections website and find out all about registrations, ballot drop boxes, mail-in ballots, et cetera. As a reminder, there will be a secure ballot drop box located at the Fraser Building on North Avenue. And if you do want to vote in person, you either need to bring your mail-in ballot with you, or you can ask for provisional vote when you're there. So it's, you know, I don't think we can communicate it enough, but this is a very different year. I also want to commend Chief Batalora and the Police Department regarding a lot of really amazing work that they've done recently, but in particular this morning, there was news about a reported home invasion and assault on Park Street. Chief Batalora reported, it does not appear to be a random act, and there's no ongoing threat to the community. And to his credit, and to the officers, Begon, DeBella, Hoplick, Santangelo, and Shaughnessy, they were swiftly responded. We've got four individuals that have been apprehended. It could have been incredibly dangerous. And so I just want to once again commend you, Chief Batalora, and the fine work of your officers. You know, they're busier than we like them to be, and I think it's, you know, there's a lot of trying times that everyone is dealing with, and your officers have continued to respond professionally and just with outstanding work. So thank you very much. Shifting gears from that, I do want to talk and mention just an update on Brightwood Park. So as I have said, I just want to get, make sure everybody's clear about that, you know. There's been a lot of conversation, obviously, about these proposed bike trails, but as I've said over and over again, we've tried to reiterate, this all stemmed from the fact that we all want the same, same thing for Brightwood. It has suffered from years of neglect, as many people know, and it's resulted in unsafe and damaging bike trails that are currently existing in the park. And it's also suffered from an abundance of invasive species that has destroyed much of the original natural habitat. So the great news about this bike trail discussion is that there's been an incredible amount of interest and attention that has been brought to Brightwood, and many, and a lot of outpouring from residents who want to help improve the park. So I really do want to give a shout out to the organizers and those that have joined, the Friends of Brightwood, and give them a particular shout out for recent cleanup efforts, which I understand was quite productive. And I want to let everybody know that there is another cleanup scheduled by the Green Team on October 11. So I hope the Friends of Brightwood will be out there again. I hope we can all rally our neighbors and be there, and there's a sign up available, which, online, which you can find in my update. So I just do want to reassure everybody, and I know there's signs going up and people keep talking about there is no plan to move forward on any changes in Brightwood in the immediate future, bike trails or otherwise, without doing our required due diligence with the New Jersey Department of Environmental Protection and Green Acres. So we're talking about something that we don't even know is quite frankly feasible. Once we have that information, which will take time, we will all work together to discuss the best path forward for enhancing and beautifying the park to ensure it's safe and accessible for all of our residents. So as a result, I don't anticipate any additional discussion on potential enhancements to Brightwood for at least six months, which is what we expect the amount of time will take for the environmental review. So I just want to assure everybody, nothing will be happening in Brightwood until that report comes back, and then we will talk about it collectively and figure out where we go from here. Another thing that we're doing tonight, as a next step to the resolution that we passed at our last meeting, we will hear an ordinance on first reading, which provides for the implementation of the five-year tax exemption and abatement law. And what this does, this amends the tax abatement law that we previously implemented in our downtown special improvement district. And it's going to expand it to include historically designated properties within the town. And this was what we promised and committed to as a companion to the recently passed historic preservation ordinance. And it allows us to implement some of the feedback that we've got from residents about providing an incentive for people to actually designate their historic properties. And so as we've said all along, incentivizing homeowners to voluntarily designate their homes, historic homes, it really is the primary goal and focus of historic preservation and this council. So this ordinance that we're introducing tonight should provide some additional assistance to further that clause. And I do want to be clear, like, the notion that we had an area need of rehabilitation for the town, there's nothing related to blight or anything like that about it. It's strictly a mechanism for enabling us to actually use this tax law to benefit historic, historically designated properties and their homeowners. I actually got this idea from Mayor Bush in Matutchen. And for those that haven't been into Matutchen recently, it's a town, it's a town very similar to Westfield, both in terms of its sensibility and its architecture. It's just about half the size, and this mechanism is something that Matutchen did, I think, last year as a way also to incentivize historic designation. And so it's just, again, a lever that we can use to hopefully further the cause of preserving our history. So that's it, I think, for tonight. It's not a crazy agenda. But I do want to remind everybody, especially on Zoom, that we'll be enforcing Robert's rules to make sure that we stay on topic. Any comments not related to the agenda, let's defer to the council meeting reports later, not in this meeting. And the public can be, will be able to comment during the public comment more, public comment portion, which they always do. So with that, thank you very much for your engagement, and I think we can get to the business at hand. So with that, do we have any advertised hearings? Mrs. Rowley?
Yep, there are two advertised hearings tonight, Mayor. The first is for General Ordinance Number 2189, an ordinance to amend the land use ordinance of the town of Westfield, revising the submission requirements for preliminary and final site plan and preliminary and final subdivision applications. Anyone wishing to be heard on General Ordinance Number 2189, please virtually raise your hand. To make your comment, be sure to include your name and address for the record.
Don't see anybody, Mayor. No one's raising their hand.
Okay, see, no one, Mayor, may close the hearing?
This hearing is closed.
And the second is General Ordinance Number 2190, an ordinance of the town of Westfield amending the exterior property maintenance code. Anyone wishing to be heard on General Ordinance Number 2190, please virtually raise your hand to make your comment. Be sure to include your name and address for the record.
Again, we see nobody raising their hand virtually on this topic.
Okay, see, no one, Mayor, may close the hearing?
This hearing is closed. And Councilwoman Mackey, please move for the adoption of Code Review and Town Property Committee ordinances.
Thank you, Mayor. The Planning Board has suggested some minor modifications to General Ordinance Number 2189. As such, I would like to make a motion to amend General Ordinance Number 2189, an ordinance to amend the land use ordinance of the town of Westfield revising the submission requirements for the preliminary and final site plan, preliminary and final subdivision applications.
May I have a second?
Second. Contract?
Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Councilwoman Habgood?
Yes.
Councilman Parmally?
Yes.
Councilman LaGrippo?
Yes.
Councilman Katz?
Yes.
Councilwoman Mackey?
Yes.
Councilman Contract?
Yes.
Councilman Dardia?
Yes.
Councilman Boys?
Yes.
Mayor Brindle?
Yes, this motion is carried.
I would like to make a motion to adopt General Ordinance Number 2189 as amended.
May I have a second?
Second, Boys.
Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Councilwoman Habgood?
Yes.
Councilman Parmally?
Yes.
Councilman LaGrippo?
Yes.
Councilman Katz?
Yes.
Councilwoman Mackey?
Yes.
Councilman Contract?
Yes.
Councilman Dardia?
Yes.
Councilman Boys?
Yes.
Mayor Brindle?
Yes, this motion is carried.
Next, I would also like to move for the adoption of General Ordinance Number 2190 on second reading. An ordinance of the town of Westfield amending the exterior property maintenance code.
May I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Councilwoman Habgood?
Yes.
Councilman Parmally?
Yes.
Councilman LaGrippo?
Yes.
Councilman Katz?
Yes.
Councilwoman Mackey?
Yes.
Councilman Contract?
Yes.
Councilman Dardia?
Yes.
Councilman Boys?
Yes.
Mayor Brindle?
Yes, this motion is carried. May I have a motion to approve the minutes for the Town Council Executive Session and Regular Meeting of September 8, 2020? Second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Yes.
Yes.
Opposed? This motion is carried. Mrs. Rowley, do we have any petitions or communications?
No, Mayor, we do not.
Now it's time for open discussion by citizens. Please virtually raise your hand to make your comment on any subject on which this council has jurisdiction, and be sure to state your name and address for the record.
Okay, we have first person here, Amy Dahl. Mrs. Dahl, if you're there, name and address, please. Are you there? Amy?
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you. Go ahead.
Okay, sorry about that. It's Amy Dahl. I live at 21 Azalea Trail.
Go ahead. Thank you.
So I'd like to thank Councilman LaGrippo for mentioning the crosswalk at Central Avenue. I'm a parent at Jefferson, and my kids have to walk home from school. And I have been walking them the last three weeks, and people go through the light at Central and Clover all the time. And I'm very concerned about there not being an adult there to help them with this, and I really feel like we should consider having a crossing guard at that crosswalk. It's a very busy street. A kid died there three years ago in generally the same spot, and you know, kids shouldn't be crossing there on their own. I understand that there is less foot traffic, but still concerning that kids are going to be crossing Central Avenue on their own.
Thank you, thank you very much. I think, because, as I said, as, I don't know if Sergeant Ostrander called you back, but it's something that they'll be looking at all the posts to see where they stand.
He did. It sounded like they are not going to be adding a crossing guard. They are going to periodically sit at the spot to see if people are going through the light, but it sounded like there wasn't any intention to add a crossing guard.
Got it. All right, thank you very much.
Thanks.
Okay. Who else would like to speak? Anyone else like to speak? Okay, we have Sherri Hines. Ms. Hines, you want to give your address?
Yes, Sherri Hines at 28 Stonely Park. I'm, I'm wanting to talk about this law that you're, this zoning with the tax abatement that you're talking about. You didn't mention that it was going to be, the most that you mentioned was the historic tax abatement, and that was your way to help the people who were going to volunteer their homes or get designation historically. But it also, as I read the zoning about it, it also is going to give tax abatement to other people, who, other developers, who might be doing mixed use and other things that you're going to be doing within the town. And isn't it true that by doing that zoning and allowing that tax abatement, there would be no bidding for these things? And where are we going to be having mixed use, potentially, other than Lord &amp; Taylor, which is probably going to end up as a mixed use with apartments and retail available to walk? I mean, I've been concerned that this rehabilitated, that we're going to consider the whole town of Westfield in need of rehabilitation is just going to open the floodgates for tax abatements to any developer who comes along who will build any kind of mixed-use building or anything else on all of the train station locations, the parking lots that are now in need of rehab, or any other place that's designated. I'm not sure I understand the need to have more retail or have apartments like Cranford has with retail underneath. I mean, retail is, I guess you haven't seen the memo that retail is not, is not thriving anymore. You know, people are shopping online, people go to dinner, but they're not shopping in stores like they used to. I mean, you can look at Westfield, you all know how many shops have left because, because online shopping is the new thing. So I'm just curious about what your thoughts are on how that is going to help the town by doing that. Trying to understand, you know, your ideas about that.
Mrs. Hines, there's eight municipal lots, I think all, believe it's all eight municipal lots.
Hey, Mark, I'm sorry, this is, we're just general comment, so we'll just let Mrs. Hines
Okay.
But I would like to, you know, it's one thing for us to, for me to comment or for any of us to comment, but we then, we don't get an answer from anybody. So it's interesting, because I don't see an answer to that, and I know it's being discussed as, well, it's a tax abatement for historic buildings, but you're giving tax abatements for other things as well. So I'd like to see that written up in the town, or some kind of information as why you think retail, we should be building more retail, mixed-use apartments, having more urban urbanization of Westfield. I also don't agree that we're like Matutchen. Westfield and Matutchen are nothing alike. Haven't been alike ever. So, you know, I see this more as trying to make Westfield into a South Orange, where they have rehabbed the whole town, and then build whatever they want to build, or take over parks, or all the rest of it, because there's no, there's nothing to hold them back, hold the town back from that. So that's what I have to say about it.
Thank you.
Anyone else like to speak? Anyone else? Okay, we have hold on. We have Kay Murphy.
Hi, yes, it's Carrie Murphy.
Carrie Murphy, address, please.
502 Cotting Road.
Okay, thank you, go ahead.
First, I wanted to see if anyone was going to respond to the prior question, because I think that's a really interesting question. And will it be on this call, or will it be written up?
I don't know.
Okay, because she put a lot of thought into that, and I think that a lot of people in this town are contemplating the same question, and it would be really helpful if someone could speak to it, either on the call or in a follow-up email, or, you know, advise us where we can find that answer.
Okay, generally, questions by the public are addressed after the close of the public comment period.
Well, you're saying generally, and you're saying, I don't know, so it doesn't lead me to believe that it's actually going to be answered. And if it is, can you tell us on this call where we should seek it out?
It's very, I'm confused if you have a comment or if you have a question.
That was a question, because basically, I'm left with, I'm left with the question of whether or not
I understand, but this is a period of public comment, so if you have a comment, you can make it, and things can be addressed after the close.
So
so just please make your comment, and then if we choose to address anything when we close the comment, we can do so.
If you choose to, if you don't do it on this call, will you do it in the future? Because I think my comment is, I think hers was a very valid question, and I think people would appreciate having an answer to it.
Right, well, that's, so that's your comment?
Correct.
Thank you.
I also wanted to know, and it's a question, but I don't know how to say it as a comment. Will someone be checking IDs at the verdu box in town, or are we just going and dropping it in? Because generally, if we are able to go to the polls and go to the booth, we have to show ID, so I want to make sure the same protocol is going to be followed.
You don't show ID.
I'm sorry, ma'am, you don't show ID when you go to vote in person?
I do, I did.
Well, there's no legal requirement that that be done.
Okay, I did at Edison. They look up your name. Will someone be there essentially manning the box? Like they do at Okay, so that's what, so perhaps you can, perhaps you can address that a little bit further, because it just feels very that a little bit further, because it just feels very willy-nilly at this point.
It's impermissible under state law for anybody to check ID for somebody to be able to vote. I'm sorry, Mayor, I'm addressing that, because that's pretty far out there.
Okay, well, then I guess I'm wrong on that one, but I do recall them looking up your name and checking your address, or some such thing. Or are we going to go to the booth, to the box, and no one will be there? And we just drop it in the box? Is that how it's going to work?
I think it's important.
Anyway, okay, okay, so I'm getting my answer by the silence. That's it for me. I'd love to hear the information on the prior question, if we could see that somewhere.
Just one other thing about the voting, Ms. Murphy, just to be clear, voting process is run by the Union County, and they're still working, most of it is going to be done by mail this year, but there will be in-person places and voting booths or drop boxes, so more information will be available on our website as soon as you get the final information from the county. So there'll be a lot more detail coming out shortly, but your question's a fair one, but most of, most of it's going to be done by mail this year, but we'll have many other spots to do it in person on a provisional ballot if you choose to. But the county runs that, and they run, they oversee the poll workers as well.
They do, okay, so it would be the county who I address this with? Okay, that's helpful, thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, we have Mr. Casco, are you there? Address, please.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
434 Everson Place, Greg Casco, good evening, Mayor and Town Council. I've been voting at Edison Junior High School since 1994, and I've never had to show ID. I understand what this woman who just called up was asking. Yes, they do ask you your name, and they verify your address in the book, you sign, and then you get your ballot, and you walk to the machine, but no, they do not require any licenses. Attorney Tom Jordan had noted that's not allowed, not permissible. I'm calling about, the first caller, I think it was, was addressing the crossing situation down at the cul-de-sac intersection of Cambridge and Central. I think she had referenced the light at Clover, and ironically, that was where the light was originally supposed to be placed. In fact, I did extensive research on this, and the town's original consulting engineer, Gordon Meth, in his report, which I think was dated back in 2004, had suggested to be put at that intersection. There's a reason why, because intersections are highly visible, they're known turning points, and most people expect crosswalks at those locations. And the light was going to be put in to facilitate the crossing of kids from one side of Central to the other. I'm not going to get into how it ended up down in front of a residence, but I think the fact that it's in front of that residence mid-block causes some confusion still to this day to drivers that pass through there. And all you have to do is go back in time to when that light was first installed, and you'll see the number of accidents. I obtained every single copy of every accident that took place, and it was because people were confused. They didn't expect the light to be there. Some people thought that that was the intersection people were turning into Mrs. N. Kleski's driveway. I think the accidents over the years have been reduced. I understand the issue with crossing guards in town, that there's a company now managing them. However, the light was put in to facilitate crossing by children going to school. And I understand the last caller's concern about a death in that roadway, on that roadway three years ago, but the circumstances surrounding that are totally different. That was at night. These kids are crossing during the day in daylight. That accident, that unfortunate untimely death occurred further down the road. I know it's a far-fetched request, but perhaps now is the time that, perhaps the town looks into the county moving that light to the intersection. I know that there was money left over from the budget back when that light was installed, and the county engineer had indicated that there was enough money to move that light to the intersection. If it can happen, it'd be great. If not, so be it, we move along. Thank you very much for your time. You all have a good night.
That's correct.
Anyone else? We have Paige Johnson. Paige?
Hello? Hi.
Go ahead. Address, please.
700 Boulevard.
Okay.
Hi, good evening. I wanted to just get some clarification on Mendawaskin Playground, and whether or not there will be a fence installed. As a mother with two very young boys, we frequently, we go there quite often, actually, and it is a wonderful playground, and it's a wonderful park. But there have been several times that my very active three-and-a-half-year-old son has kind of wandered off, and as many of you might know, if you have children, it can happen in the blink of an eye. And not only myself, but several other, you know, moms, I'm sure, have had this happen. I know of several myself. You know, their kids just dart off very quickly, and as you guys know, there's a street there that a lot of people tend to go pretty quickly. I believe it's a 15 mile-per-hour speed limit there, but cars do not follow that. They tend to go pretty fast, and it's just, you know, it's a very, very pretty and a great playground and park to visit, and you guys have done a terrific, terrific job by putting the benches in, and new shrubs, trees, et cetera, but I was just wondering if there will ever be a fence there to help, you know, secure the safety for our children.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson, and we'll address this after we close public comments.
Okay, thank you. Okay, thanks.
Thank you. Anyone else like to speak? Last call. Seeing none, Mayor, I think we can close the public hearing. You're on mute, Mayor.
It wouldn't be a Zoom call without someone saying that, right?
Yeah.
So we will close this portion of the public comments, and, and I would like to address, just to reiterate, this is public comment, but I'm happy to address some of the questions that were just raised. So the questions by Ms. Hines and by Ms. Murphy regarding the rehab and redevelopment, Ms. Hines, it seems like was conflating a little bit the rehabilitation designation, the redevelopment designation. They're two very separate and distinct things with separate goals. The area in need of rehabilitation is a very, it's a, it goes, it's really, we initiated it for downtown, our property owners downtown, to incentivize them, give them an opportunity to fix up and improve their properties. And if you take a look around at many of the old buildings, they could use some investment, and so we were trying to use that as an incentivized incentive to do that. And we're using that same tool for historically designated homes. And my reference to Matutchen was just related to their historic designation in their homes and their downtown. The redevelopment, I don't know, you're talking about like, I wasn't quite sure the reference to mixed use and retail, and it sounds, you know, we have, we don't have redevelopment planned for any of those sites, so I think it will be determined what is going to come up on that site, and I think we will be working with and collaborating with potential developers and property owners, such as Lord &amp; Taylor, to see what might make sense on that site that works for them, and what works in the best interest of our community. But, but there's, we're not there even remotely yet, there are no plans, and I, and no plans would be put forward without getting effective in soliciting public input, so, and you are happy, and we would welcome some of the opinions that you expressed today. We'll give you the opportunity to express those in public forums, ideally and directly to whatever developments, we may, developers who may be interested in working here. And regarding, I guess, Ms. Murphy's, I think the voter ID question was answered. And the process, I've been voting by mail and early, ever since Governor Christie allowed early mail, early voting as a result of Hurricane Sandy, so I've only ever voted by mail and voted early since then. So when you, when the reference was looking up an ID, if you vote by mail, that's not, it's, it's no, you don't go through that process as you would if you were in person. So I comfortably vote by mail, I'll be using the drop box in front of the Fraser Building, but, but the vote-by-mail scenario is one where you've never presented ID, because you do it by mail, and I've been incredibly, I feel very confident in that process and how it's being rolled out.
Mayor, I do just want to remind everybody that they can still vote in person, that they can still go to their polling location and vote provisionally.
Right, or they, or they could bring their vote-by-mail ballot with them, so they could their hand in their vote-by-mail directly on that day at their polling location, or they can ask for a provisional ballot if they don't have it. But you're absolutely right, they can still vote by person, have someone take that ballot from them if they, if that would give them that courage and confidence. And regarding Mr. Casco's comment about the light on Central, we are in the middle of doing a circulation plan for the town, and I have asked the company that's doing it to just pay special attention to that corridor and that light, to see if it's, if where it is, is the appropriate and best place to put it relative to the other circulation elements that are being looked at as part of the entire town. So I guess we'll see what comes out of their recommendation when that's completed. And lastly, Ms. Johnson, about the fence in Mendawaskin, I recognize, obviously, we've gotten a lot of feedback about that for people who are similar situations, just like yourself, with multiple kids. You know, we try to, in me time, put some landscaping around it to make it safe, and I do think we have asked the Rec. Commission, because they make all the recommendations for what should, what investments should be made in the park. We've asked the Rec. Commission to take a look at the, what it would take, and what would be the implications of installing a fence in Mendawaskin to address some of your concerns. That would be in next year's budget, and so we'll, we'll see what, what recommendations they might have. But we've heard you loud and clear, and not just you, but a lot of other residents in similar situations, and certainly, safety is our first priority, so. But thank you for bringing, all of you, for speaking up and bringing your attentions to your concerns here today.
Thank you.
Okay, so I think it's now time for bills and claims, so Councilwoman Hapgood?
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to move bills and claims in the amount of $216,729.19.
May I have a second?
Second.
Second, boys.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Yes.
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 Opposed? This motion is carried. So next on the agenda is reports of standing committees, being with Finance Policy Committee. Councilwoman Hapgood?
Thank you again, Mayor. I have two resolutions, which I'd like to move as a package. The first being a resolution authorizing the CFO to refund Recreation Department fees, and the second, a resolution authorizing the CFO to draw a warrant for overpaid taxes in 2020.
May I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Yes.
Yes.
Opposed? This motion is carried. Next is the Code Review and Town Property Committee. Councilwoman Mackey?
I would like to move a resolution to approve annual renewal of alcoholic beverage liquor licenses.
May I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Yes.
Yes.
Opposed? This motion is carried.
Next, I would like to move General Ordinance Number 2191 on first reading, an ordinance to amend the code of the town of Westfield, Chapter 20.
May I have a second?
Second, boys.
Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Councilwoman Hapgood?
Yes.
Councilwoman Parmally?
Yes.
Councilwoman LaGrippo?
Yes.
Councilwoman Katz?
Yes.
Councilwoman Mackey?
Yes.
Councilwoman Contract?
Yes.
Councilwoman Dardia?
Yes.
Councilwoman Boyce?
Yes.
Mayor Brindle?
Yes, this motion is carried.
I would like to move General Ordinance Number 2192 on first reading, an ordinance to amend certain provisions of the land use ordinance of the town of Westfield to include a report and recommendation of the Westfield Fire Department on development applications.
May I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Councilwoman Hapgood?
Yes.
Councilwoman Parmally?
Yes.
Councilwoman LaGrippo?
Yes.
Councilwoman Katz?
Yes.
Councilwoman Mackey?
Yes.
Councilwoman Contract?
Yes.
Councilwoman Dardia?
Yes.
Councilwoman Boyce?
Yes.
Mayor Brindle?
Yes, this motion is carried.
I would also like to move General Ordinance Number 2193 on first reading, an ordinance to amend certain provisions of the land use ordinance of the town of Westfield by defining artisan, manufacturing, and establishing them as a permitted principal use in certain zone districts.
May I have a second?
Second, boys.
Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Councilwoman Hapgood?
Yes.
Councilwoman Parmally?
Yes.
Councilwoman LaGrippo?
Yes.
Councilwoman Katz?
Yes.
Councilwoman Mackey?
Yes.
Councilwoman Contract?
Yes.
Councilwoman Dardia?
Yes.
Councilwoman Boyce?
Yes.
Mayor Brindle?
Yes, this motion is carried.
Hey, Mayor?
Yeah.
Guys, I just want to thank Don, Don Sammet. We've had a lot of things come through Don's committee, a lot of ordinance changes, and we, thankfully, we have Don on staff, who's been able to generate these changes, having to go through the attorney's office, check it over, and get these things done quickly. And for not, not for Don's work, a lot of these very important, very helpful changes for the downtown would not be achieved in such a quick fashion, so I just want to thank Don publicly, because he's done a great job with these things.
All right. Agree more?
Yeah, it's my pleasure.
Do you want to tell, give some context to the one we just passed, and what that is?
I would love to. You know, we're trying to be proactive about the kind of businesses we'd like to attract to the downtown, especially as some of the residents pointed out tonight, that there's, there's a change in the landscape, and retail is not the only thing to bring people to a downtown. And we're interested in what is also kind of known as a maker's space, which would be a place where people can come, and they could do pottery, or do jewelry and crafts. We have a lot of homemakers that do their things and sell them on Etsy, and this would be a communal place where they could come together, there could be classes. And at this moment, we don't have somebody looking for that, but we want to be proactive so that people know, hey, like, if I wanted to do this in Westfield, they're ready for me, I don't need a variance to permitted use, and we think that it would be excellent, it will elevate us in terms of culture, and I think that it would really energize the downtown. So I'm hoping somebody's listening tonight, and they want to come open up a nice artisan manufacturing place in downtown.
Yes, let's hope so. And again, I'll reiterate, because you're right, we've been throwing a lot of stuff at Don Sammet, and he does not flinch, and he does exceptional work, so thank you. So I think before we're moving, I think Councilwoman Contract had some updates, but before that, I think.
One more.
Okay, one more, I'm sorry, I jumped ahead, sorry, Don, keep going.
Lastly, I would like to move General Ordinance Number 2194 on first reading, an ordinance amending General Ordinance Number 2171, providing for the implementation in the town of Westfield of the five-year tax exemption and abatement law pursuant to NJSA 40A 21.
May I have a second?
Second, Dardia.
I'll be, I'll be voting no on that, as far as, I'd like to get a better understanding for the financials before we give tax abatements.
Okay. Okay, okay, please call the roll.
Councilwoman Hapgood?
Yes.
Councilwoman Parmally?
Yes.
Councilwoman LaGrippo?
No.
Councilwoman Katz?
Yes.
Councilwoman Mackey?
Yes.
Councilwoman Contract?
Yes.
Councilwoman Dardia?
Yes.
Councilwoman Boyce?
Yes.
Mayor Brindle?
Yes, this motion is carried. So, sorry, now, before giving an update, Councilwoman Contract, I think has a few updates, but I think Councilwoman Parmally had an update, too.
Just wanted to say something really quick. I wanted to remind everybody about the census and the deadline that's coming up. There was back in August, the U.S. Census Bureau Director, Stephen Dillingham, pointed out that all field data collection operations are going to end as of September 30th of 2020. And that means online efforts and in-person efforts are going to close, and I just want to remind everyone to get out there. You've got eight days, including this evening, if you do it online, and to point out how important it is to get an accurate count, not only to, so we have, in New Jersey, the proper amount of representation and converse. Also, it would, in theory, could have many benefits to Westfield itself. So get out there and get yourself a candidate if you haven't done so already.
And as I'd like to remind everybody, if we get to 33,000, we get an extra liquor license, so incentive. So, okay, and so Councilman Contract, I know you had some updates for the Public Works Committee.
Yeah, so I had actually some updates for Public Works Committee, Green Team, as well as Lifeline Westfield. So starting with Lifeline Westfield, I just want to thank everybody who's involved in the Westfield 300 Milestone Awards, where we announced the winners last week. And for the residents to know, we were trying to find people and honor people who have longevity in Westfield and are deserving of recognition, including, you know, oldest resident, families that have lived in Westfield in terms of generations, the longest, even the oldest cat and the oldest dog. We unfortunately forgot to mention somebody in the award ceremony last week, and we feel awful, but there was another runner-up for most number of generations living consecutively in Westfield, and it's the Simone family. And Gloria Simone is the one who submitted. And briefly, and this is amazing, they've lived five generations, not only in Westfield, but on the same street, and many of those generations in the same house on Green Place. So worthy of recognition, and our apologies again to the Simone family for not recognizing them last in the award ceremony. On the town website are all the winners, and the press has covered it. It's a wonderful way to celebrate Westfield's history, and just think about, you know, the winning family has lived in Westfield six generations, that's your great-great-grandfather. Most of us probably don't even know who our great-great-grandfather was, and we have families going all the way back and live in Westfield. So that's wonderful, and just a big shout out to folks who really put this on, Brad Channing, Amy, Adrian, Lauren Harmer from the Rec Commission, I'm sorry, the Rec Department, Kathy Doolin and Ron Holmes, you guys did a great job with this. And I know you really enjoyed giving out the awards last week, so just a big thank you to everybody for contributing. Switching gears to the Green Team, I just want to build on what Jim Gilde said about the free market. So the free market's on Saturday. Because of COVID and social distancing, we did ask residents to sign up for both drop-off slots and pickup slots. Unfortunately, all the slots are full, which is great, the response has been tremendous. We are accepting walk-ins. If you really want to come, you may have to wait, that's why we did the slots, we're trying to space people out. So we will accept walk-ins, we've done the best we can to accommodate everybody, and we're looking forward to a great event, unlike last year when it rained. Latest weather forecast is partly cloudy, so we hope that sticks, and we're going to do good for Westfield and do good for the environment, so we're looking forward to that. Related to the Green Team, I just want to clarify on the pop-up bike lane, there was unfortunately some confusion as to where, where and when the pop-up bike lane was being proposed. So just to make sure everybody fully understands, the pop-up bike lane that the Green Team's recommending is being proposed just for Sunday, October 4th, to tie into the DWC's Fall Foodie Stroll from 12 to 4:00. It would be on Prospect between Dudley and Lincoln, the part of Lincoln closest to Franklin School, not the part that's closest to Dudley. On one side, it's a one-direction marked with traffic cones. There's a resident meeting a week from tonight at 7:00 on Zoom. If you'd like to join and hear more about it, if you have comments, you have questions, you're welcome to participate. If you would like to participate, please email westfieldbike lanes@gmail.com, and then we'll send you the Zoom link. So we did hand out flyers to the residents on the affected route over the weekend, and we're inviting everybody to join to hear more about it. It's a first step towards realizing some of the recommendations in the bike and pedestrian plan, and it's a test, you know, for a couple hours to see how it goes. So that, that's, that's that clarification. And then lastly, just so the public knows, the Public Works Committee has met, and I know there was some, some folks that were concerned about the storm debris cleanup. We are, as a committee, looking at a better way to do that going forward. So we'll be making recommendations for the council over the next probably six to eight weeks for future storms, so I just wanted residents to know that, it hasn't been lost on us. I wanted to remind residents that leaf collection season is just around the corner, you probably have some leaves that have fallen off your trees. There'll be a video that we're coming out with to introduce some new collection methods this year, in addition to what the town already does, so please watch out for that video. It will talk about a new voluntary bagging program. Our goal is to try to, you know, keep as many leaves off the street as possible because it creates some significant issues around parking, flooding, and safety. So look out for the video, as well as the leaf collection brochure, which will be coming out probably next month, which will have all the details. And lastly, the Timocus Rain Garden should be installed, Jim, next month, are we on track for that?
Yes, we're just waiting for records to come out and be with us as we begin the digging process. Yes, we're on track to have that process done. It's a very large rain garden, it's very exciting, actually.
Yeah, and that's it, thank you.
David, real quick, the debris that's still in the street from the storm, residents should just leave there, leave it there, and the DPW will pick it up for leaf season? Or what's?
You know, great question, do you want to address that?
So the debris in the street, it was any debris left in the street, Public Works has been out now for the past two weeks handing out, putting door hangers on homes where debris is in the street that's not town debris. And so that's the residents' responsibility. If it's town debris, we've had people emailing us through either email to Total Public Works calling or using the Westfield Connect app, and Greg O'Neill will go out and examine the pile, and if it's town debris, we kind of pick it up, of course. But, so we don't want, we do not want anything in the street before leaf season. So that's why the, the door hangers are going out, people are learning whether they have to pick it up or get rid of it, or we will, and hopefully it'll all be done in the next couple weeks and before leaf season begins.
Great, thank you.
The best is, recommend anybody use the See Click Fix app, it's been the most effective, and Mr. O'Neill and his staff are getting that and going out and talking to residents directly.
Good, thanks, Jim.
Thank you, Jim. Before I ask for a motion to adjourn, I want to give our chief, Tony Tiller, a big congratulations on his wedding this past weekend, and he's so dedicated, he's here three days later, so congratulations, chief.
Congratulations.
Very much, I appreciate it.
Nice job, chief.
Absolutely, very nice. May I have a motion to adjourn?
So move.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Yes.
Yes.
Opposed?
Yes.
Thank you, everybody, this motion is carried and this meeting is adjourned. Good night.
Thanks, everybody.